Board of Commissioners. Meeting. We'll start out with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning. Zana Giro, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy Croney, County Council.
Suzanne Hoffman, Interim County Administrator.
And in the room.
I'm April Holland, Public Attorney.
Mark Jaeger, Benton County Resident.
Hi, Charlie.
She's my insurance officer.
Mandy Place, County Resident and Volunteer at the Public Center.
County Board of the US Civilian Program.
Mandy Meepe, Administrator Specialist.
Home Worker Representing Secret Attorney in the County Senate.
Orifice Ben Chapman, Public Attorney.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
And those joining us online.
Jeff Van Arstal, Benton County Sheriff.
Camille Hall, Benton County Resident.
Ken Eklund, Benton County Resident and Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Council.
Daniel Reddick, Solid Waste and Water Quality Program Coordinator for Benton County.
Good morning. Darren Nichols, Community Development Director for Benton County.
Well, good morning. And next up is announcements. Are there any announcements this morning? Hearing none, review and approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I will consider the agenda approved. Next up is comments from the public. We have a couple people in person and then probably a couple online. So first up, Mandy Place, would you come up? And there's a little trick. There's a button on the microphone and it goes from red to green.
Thank you. Is this good? Good morning. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about an issue on the forefront of everyone's minds, homelessness in our community. I am a volunteer at the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center, and as someone who has personally experienced homelessness, this issue is close to my heart. The Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center data shows that between July 2022 and July 2023, the center served almost 900 unduplicated guests, and their street outreach team supported 60 to 100 people per month, many of whom do not use the center proper. The services they provide for homeless individuals are staggering. They are running on a modest budget and operating out of a 2,200 square foot space that they have outgrown. With the recent closure of the Unity Men's Cold Weather Shelter, they have noticed an uptick in people in need of services. For example, the drop-in center has been serving nearly 90 individuals per day during their walk-in hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. Hope's Advisory Board's vision states that everyone in Benton County should have the opportunity to live in decent, safe, and affordable housing. We can immediately help fulfill this vision and four out of the 12 Hope Advisory Board policy recommendations by expanding what's already working to get people off the streets. Navigation Center, CHB 2006, which was approved in 2021, is quite similar to the drop-in center in its current iteration, but scaled up and with an emergency shelter component to the facility. Benton County can help stop the cycle of poverty that impacts people who are, for example, unable to sleep in safe places, self-administer necessary mental health medications, get adequate access to hygiene, and hence take first steps towards stability and housing. With the larger space, the drop-in center could also house more service providers onsite, offer respite sheltering, and help partner to provide inclement weather sheltering, fulfilling the county's obligation to handle this type of emergency. The drop-in center has secured a $550,000 capital grant from the city of Corvallis to acquire and create a navigation center. Please take action and use available county government funds to provide relief and support for the lives and health of our community. Prior to recent bond measure voting, you polled Benton County citizens, and they overwhelmingly agreed that homelessness services should be a top priority for the county. You were also willing to commit up to $3 million in county funding toward a navigation center, which you claimed was a priority project for the county. Commissioners, I am urgently asking you to please partner your discretionary funds with the city's existing capital grant to help purchase a navigation navigation center space before the city grant funding expires this December 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I forgot to say is up to three minutes and you did nicely. So appreciate that. Good job. All right. Next up is Mark Jaeger. And same comment there, up to three minutes.
Good morning, Mark Jaeger, Benton County Resident. As you prepared today to consider the RFP for the Sustainable Materials Management Plan, I'd like to pose a few questions for you. And so I'm just going to run through some questions. How does the proposed request for proposals answer the questions, the key questions related to the future of the landfill? With zero regulatory authority, how will the county implement any resultant Sustainable Materials Management Plan? How does a landfill-based Sustainable Materials Management Plan result in anything but a larger forever landfill? What will it take for you to think again about the wisdom of hosting the largest landfill in western Oregon forever in this county? Is it worth $400,000 to develop a plan that will sit on a shelf and not be implemented? With respect to another action that the staff is urging you to do today, the dissolution of the Solid Waste Advisory Council, I'd like to pose a couple of questions related to that. The first question is, what's the objective and rationale for dissolving SWAC except to attempt to silence the existing members who are asking the hard questions? Similarly, this thing was done during the Benton County Tox Trash Work Group. Folks were kicked off because they were asking difficult questions. And finally, how is it that you can take an action to dissolve the Solid Waste Advisory Council that is in direct violation of Benton County Code 23.020? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And if you have written comments, same comment for you, Mandy, get them to our recorder so they get in the record. All right. It looks like we have a couple people online. Camille and Ken Eklund are there, two different testimonies here. And whoever would like to go first, go ahead and start.
I'd be happy to go first. So I'm Camille Hall. I'm a Benton County resident. And I urge the county to place an emphasis on diverting material from the landfill in the Sustainable Materials Management Plan Request for Proposals. Republic Services is capable of handling waste in ways that don't add to groundwater pollution from household and industrial chemicals and from air pollution generated by methane from organic waste. But they won't do it if we don't ask them to. In order to develop the information needed to start this process, this request for proposals must address the need for additional sorting of waste through transfer stations that are already in existence or in the process of being built within the hauling area for Coffin-Butte landfill. Since 70% of Coffin-Butte waste comes from outside Lynn and Benton Counties, that trash can be processed before being sent to the landfill without Benton County having to build its own transfer station. This request for proposals must incorporate the requirement to address this possibility during the life of this solid Sustainable Materials Management Plan, or will be in the same situation 20 years from now with nothing to show from the hundreds of thousands of dollars and hours invested in the pre-planning process and the trash talks, public input process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Camille. And next up is Ken Eklund.
Yes. Hi there. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ken Eklund, Benton County Resident and Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Council. I'm speaking to you today about the upcoming staff recommendation to dissolve the Solid Waste Advisory Council and have some of its functions transferred to an ad hoc committee, which brings up a few questions which I hope Darren will answer when he presents this recommendation later today. One, how long, how large in pages is the backlog of work for SWAC? Will this backlog be passed along to the new ad hoc committee for them to address? Or what exactly is going to happen to it? Two, can Darren tell us what public outreach has been conducted about this proposed change? Since the core function of SWAC is to connect the public and the county, it seems like it would be appropriate for the public to have an opportunity to weigh in. Along those lines, what notification did Darren give to the volunteers on SWAC themselves? Three, won't this change create tension in the ad hoc committee? Won't it have to decide on any given day whether to work on waste management as it's currently happening in Benton County, which is what SWAC used to do, or waste management as it should happen in the future, which is the ad hoc committee's role? Or Republic Services has said they will file a new application for a landfill expansion soon. SWAC normally would play a key role in evaluating that application. Isn't it a problem that SWAC will have been dissolved when the next application is received? Doesn't the timing of that look suspicious? SWAC's role is to connect what the county knows with what the public knows. It's the place other than in your meetings where the public can actually sit down with the county and get questions answered. And it seems to me that's why county staff are recommending that it be abolished. This is also tragic to me. In my professional life, I work with organizations who dream of the sort of public engagement you have. They pay money to try to get it. They realize that the public is a large and capable ally when you're confronted with complex problems. Like recently, when a member of the public pointed out a multimillion dollar error in county budget projections, for example. Yet Benton County staff seems to be set on having an adversarial relationship with the public instead. They certainly have been adversarial to me as a volunteer, and this is the latest little bit. You can tell I'm a little angry. I often hear that the Solid Waste Advisory Council serves at the pleasure of the board. That's not what the code actually says. It says that members serve at the pleasure of the board. The code requires you to have an advisory council. It lays out who should be on it and how it should operate and so on. If you want to change the code, that's one thing. But what is being recommended to you later today goes against the code, and it sure seems like repression of public access to government and destruction of transparency in government, which is against the county's stated values. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public this morning? If not, we'll move on to our work session. Monthly COVID update from Health Services, April Holland. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Maybe get a little, little closer.
How about now? A little more? I need to bend into it, don't I? Okay. Feel like I'm eating it. You're today to share your COVID-19 update, and I apologize that it's not as boring as I'd like it to be. As you know, we continue to monitor hospitalizations, wastewater, and testing positivity to assess COVID-19 transmission in the community. Our hospitalizations have been rising across Oregon for the last couple of weeks. The number of individuals hospitalized with COVID-19 at last update was 173. Unfortunately, that's about a 50% increase from when I came to you last week, when, sorry, last month, when it was 113. Here in Benton County, three people were hospitalized in the last week, and that figure was two previously. Regarding statewide test positivity, which is collected by Sentinel Surveillance Laboratories and reported through CDC, that latest figure is 10.9% positive tests out of all tests, which is a pretty big increase from the 7.6% figure we saw last month. Looking at all of Region 10, which includes us here in Oregon, as well as Idaho, Washington, and Alaska, that figure is 10.3%. So we're, we're right in line with our HHS Region 10 with almost 11% positive tests right now. Wastewater monitoring, as you know, we use that to, to signal what, what may be to come looking across the state at many areas. Right now, there aren't a lot of signals that are sustained, that, that have sustained increases across the state. However, both in Eugene and Woodburn, those are the two areas that, that have sustained increases right now. And, and just as a reminder, I'm sure you know this by heart, but usually when we see these sustained increases, we see a couple weeks later an increase in cases. And then when we have increased hospitalizations, those follow the cases a few weeks after that. And when we do have increased deaths, those follow after we see the hospitalizations. So now, now you know what's going on right now. How, and you probably are wondering, what does this mean? How, how bad is it? So the dominant strain out there right now in the U.S. is, is yet another new subvariant of Omicron. So we've been talking Omicron for a long time here in the U.S. This one is called EG5. Some people are giving all the variants special names. I'm just going to stick to the scientific nomenclature to keep it, keep it straight for us. This EG5 is closely related to the XBD variants that have been really dominating here in the last six months or so. And at this point, you know, sweeping from east to west, as we've seen these variants do, we haven't seen this variant be more virulent or, or cause more serious illness relative to the, the, all the Omicron variants we've seen so far. What we have seen is that there, what we do know is there's a mutation on this new variant that allows it to compete successfully. It, it, it evades immunity better than the others, and that's why it's risen to the top and become dominant. So it's, it's causing a wave of illnesses. While we are seeing increases in hospitalizations, increased deaths have not been witnessed on the whole so far in Oregon or across the U.S. Right now, about 1% of all deaths are attributed to COVID-19 over the past week, and it's not a departure from what we've seen previously. Sorry about the microphone. Moving on to how we can protect ourselves, right? As we go into this, we've had the new, the new COVID-19 vaccine on our minds, and I've been hinting at it for quite some time, and I've got some, but not complete, information for you today. So last month, they shared that the, the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices was set to meet August 3rd to determine recommendations, timing, dosing, all that good stuff. But they didn't talk about that. They didn't, they, they, they talked a lot about the new RSV vaccine and gave some hints as to what they might be talking about as the new COVID-19 vaccine comes to market. So the new vaccine is expected to be ready by late September or early October. So the new vaccine is expected to be ready by late September or early October, just in time to combine with an annual flu vaccination. The composition of this new vaccine will be monovalent. You know, the last booster we had was a bivalent, including both the original strain and the strain that had been circulating previously, I think it was BA4. This one is just, consists of one of the XBB variants, 1.5, which was a big driver in cases a couple of months ago, and it's really closely related to this EG5 that we're seeing now. So it's expected that we'll have, the booster will provide protection and broaden public immunity as we move forward. One new thing about the vaccine that's coming is that it's going to replace the original primary series vaccine. So this is really going to help streamline and simplify the vaccine supply. It's gotten incredibly convoluted with multiple vaccine manufacturers and multiple formulations. So this is going to help on the provider side. Additionally, I just want to share that in addition to Pfizer and Moderna, which we all know well, we're likely to see a traditional protein-based vaccine with an adjuvant, so more in line with what we've seen with vaccines previously be added to the mix. This one comes from a company called Novavax, which has been around in the vaccine world and somewhat more recently in the COVID-19 vaccine world. So that's likely to be an option as well. So of course, before the new vaccines can be distributed, they're going to need approval from the FDA. They're going to need the new recommendations from CDC, which we don't yet have. And then, of course, approval from the Oregon Health Authority. This is going to come together as it has previously in the days and the weeks before its release. And you know, as I just said, we don't have information yet on dosing, recommendations for age groups or the timing of vaccines. So we may see, for example, an interval recommendation between COVID-19 shots. If someone may have gotten a booster recently, we may see a recommendation to wait a certain amount of time after a COVID-19 infection to receive a booster. We have a lot of capacity in our community for COVID-19 vaccine delivery with most providers and pharmacies carrying COVID-19 vaccines. And again, I know I've said this before, but when the vaccines do reach us, we expect that there's going to be increased demand, but capacity to ensure that folks can get the vaccines that they need and want. And the timing is really good in that in alignment with influenza vaccine season. With the previous COVID-19 vaccines, we've seen no contraindication to receive both vaccinations at once. And we will be urging providers, pharmacies, and other clinics to take advantage of that to the best of their ability. I have more notes, but I just want to pause and leave it for questions for you. I'm not, I guess I will add first that while we know that we're seeing some increases in hospitalizations, and we know that we've probably heard of some folks in the community that have been testing positive for COVID-19, this is another wave of Omicron. We should take special care for folks who have immunocompromising conditions and underlying conditions. At this point, deaths are not increasing. I've been told anecdotally that many of the hospitalized persons with COVID-19 are incidental with hospitalization for something else, not necessarily hospitalized with severe COVID-19 disease, though that also does happen. So just so, you know, want to temper that, the increase with the fact that we've got this vaccine coming. We still have, well, aside from smoky skies, we still have opportunity to be outside and have good ventilation. We've got broad, widespread immunity from severe illness, and we've got a vaccine around the corner that's going to stop.
Any questions for April? I will. Interval between boosters. I've heard recently, four months, and it seemed like in the past, well, six months. Is something in there? And I guess not just boosters, but if you have COVID, same kind of interval? Is that kind of the ballpark that we should be observing?
That's a really good question, Commissioner. So I think there are a lot of reasons why the CDC will have certain recommendation and then ask folks to speak with their provider. So if, for example, we see CDC recommends four months from your last COVID-19 booster, just as an example, there may be, a provider might say, you know what? I think you should wait X number of months, or you should go and get that booster as soon as you can. It depends on the person's individual health needs. We're going to see probably an allowance or a recommendation that folks, after infection, you know, a recommendation that someone waits a certain amount of time. And again, whether it's previous vaccination or previous infection, a provider may have a different recommendation based on that person's individual risk profile.
Okay. Clears that right up.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's that's the best information we have, so I appreciate that. So we've got a shiny new vaccine coming month and a half. And would the recommendation be to wait till that comes out? Unless you have special circumstances, wait till a new improved booster comes out sometime around the first part of October? And then then get flu and the COVID shot at that time?
Thanks. I'm really trying to give you as clear and direct answers as I can. I just want to say that before I give a lot of caveats. So generally, you know, again, it does depend on individual circumstances. If someone has, you know, no immunocompromising conditions, have had the last booster, they're not even going to be eligible for one of the current boosters. If someone is, and they have, for example, some kind of medical reason, a bunch of travel coming up, I think it really, really, circumstances come into question. But for anyone, for myself, for example, because that's really who I can speak for. If I had the opportunity to get the current booster today or to wait until late September to get the monovalent booster with the more current formulation, I would wait a month.
All right. Thank you. Bonus question. Talked about fairly low level of COVID through the summer. Do we have something similar with flu? We don't talk about it, but there's, it's in the background, it's always there. And then as we get into the indoor season and fall and winter, the cases really ramp up. Is that accurate? I'm just trying to compare COVID that was going along fairly low level. Do we, is it normal to have low levels of flu kind of in the background?
It's possible. Yeah, absolutely. So we really consider flu season started when there's a certain percent positivity of testing going on. So at the state level, those Sentinel labs continue to send in positive tests and all the tests that they're conducting for flu. And when it reaches a certain threshold, that's the official week one of flu season. Typically, we know it's October, November through May. That's the thing about influenza is that it's settled into this typical seasonal pattern, and we haven't really reached that point with COVID-19. But it is, you know, ideally, as we move along, we'll be able to know if we do have some kind of seasonal or cyclical occurrence. We'll be able to find those thresholds and take action then.
Great. Any other questions for April? Well, thank you for doing a good job keeping us updated, because I know things change regularly, and it's reassuring that you're on the job and bringing us updates a couple of times a month. So thank you.
Thank you. Just want to call out that it's a great big village of a team pulling all this great work together.
Well, tell the team thank you. All right. Next up, 4.2 Samaritan Treatment and Recovery Services. This is Scott Palmer. Welcome. Maybe I'll set the table here. Maybe three years ago, when this facility was getting started, Benton County contributed $250,000 or something in that neighborhood. And at least, well, personally, haven't heard much since then, so that's the reason for the invite today.
Perfect.
Or part of the reason, anyway.
Part of the reason, sure. Thank you for having me. So yes, I'm here to speak about the Samaritan Treatment and Recovery Services. That is in Lebanon. The money that was provided by Benton County back in 2018, I believe is when it actually came, it says the numbers that I got in the email. All of that money went into building the building that we are currently in. We have a 16-bed residential facility. We have eight women and eight male beds, female and male beds. We also provide, aside from the residential services, we provide intensive outpatient services. We also provide outpatient services and DUI education. So I do have some numbers as far as the amount of people that we've had in residential since we opened in 2020 in the midst of the pandemic. So it was rough, apparently. I have not been there the entire time. I've only been with SARS for about two years now. So I missed the opening. But of the numbers that I have, we had 150 people come through, 62 males, 88 females. The completion rate, we had 28% completion that were a positive outcome for the males. We had 37% completion that was positive for the females. Our total completion rate is 46.4%, 40%, which is higher than the national average at 42%. So we're a little bit higher than the national average as far as completion rate and success rate. We are currently in the process of building another facility in Newport to help provide services over in that area of the world as well, of Oregon. That is hopefully going to be open August, September, sometime next year, is the current plan for that to open. So we have, we're continuing to provide as many services as we possibly can for our community. We do typically have a waitlist to get into our residential program. So most of the time, our beds are full. I mean, we only have 16 beds, but we are full most of the time. So where we have to try and find other resources for the folks that we're trying to provide services for, or we get them involved in one of our other Oh, yes, sorry. So, or we get them into our intensive outpatient group while we're waiting for a bed to open for them to where they can get them into residential. Any questions as of right now? Go for it.
One of my questions is about the where the clients are from. I know that we don't have the ability to turn people away that are not from Lynn County, Benton County, for instance. And that was one of the things we debated when we contributed capital funds for the facility is we knew that we might not be able to get the people in need from our own communities into this facility. Do you have any kind of tracking records about the geographic origin of the patients that have been referred?
I don't have any harsh, specific numbers, but I do know that most of our patients come from Benton and Lynn County. We do get some from Lincoln County, some from Marion County, but for the most part, in Lane, we had a few from Lane County. But for the most part, we're pulling from Eastland and Benton County and Westland, I guess, too.
And how long is the waiting list, and how long does it typically take to get someone into the facility?
Longest it takes typically is a couple of weeks. But then, like I said, we try to get them into services with us first, get them into detox prior to them coming to us. Also, we set up a plan with an area detox center. Most of the time is Bridgeway and Salem, too. We get a lot of we work really well with Bridgeway to where we can get them into detox and then have the straight bed-to-bed from detox to us. Ideally, I would like to have more services in Benton County specifically, but we're not really there in Benton County specifically. But I'd love to see more services here. Whether that's prevention, whether that's treatment services, whatever that looks like, but I'd love to have some more. And Samaritan is all through Benton County, Lynn County, Lincoln County, all of that. I'd love to see more as far as what we do with the folks in Benton County specifically.
And has, I know you guys don't do detox per se, correct?
Right.
Has the has the detox component been a bottleneck?
Typically, I would say no. I mean, it's been pretty easy to get folks into detox pretty quickly. A lot of times, we can get somebody into Bridgeway same day or next day. As far as when they come in to do an assessment with myself or somebody else, one of the other counselors that's there. We can usually call Bridgeway and get them into detox that day or next day, like I said, without any real issue. The only issue is, again, trying to get them into a bed right away. We're doing the best we can to get folks in as quickly as we possibly can to obviously provide the services that we, we're here to provide, that we want to provide, that we need to provide. What we do, it's our passion, it's what we're here for.
And last question, and then I'll free up some airtime. Are you seeing primarily folks contending with alcohol or alcohol in combination with other substances? And I know that some of the substances out there are really tricky these days. So. Yeah.
Okay, so primary substances that we're asking. Okay, so we do see a lot of alcoholism, but obviously, in our area, we see a lot of methamphetamine use. We see a lot of heroin use, see a lot of fentanyl use anymore. The xylazine is making its way here, which is known as trank, if you're not aware. It's very, very scary, dangerous stuff that's getting cut and mixed in with fentanyl. It's getting cut and mixed in with methamphetamines to where it causes skin ulcers, mostly on forearms, legs, back of the neck. It's pretty gnarly stuff. Anyway. So we really see a lot of, kind of those three are our main, or our main between alcohol, fentanyl, heroin, and methamphetamine is where we get a lot of, is what we see a lot of, I should say.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a clarification, I think the Benton County contribution was in 2019, because that was the first year I was on the board.
Okay, well, the email I got, like I said, was 2018.
I'm pretty sure it was when Annabelle and Anne and I were on the board. At least we discussed it then. That's when it started the process.
Well, I remember voting on it, and it had to be 2019. You mentioned the new Newport facility. Is that going to be the 16-bed configuration or?
Yes, it's going to have the same model that we have right now as far as 16 beds, half male, half female, provide all three levels of service as well, residential, intensive outpatient, outpatient services. I'm assuming they'll do DUIs all over there. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I'm assuming that they would, since we do it here in Lebanon. Speaking back to the detox thing, we do have an open lot that's connected to our parking lot currently, and we're thinking in longer, shortest term that that lot could potentially become a detox. So we'll have a detox right there. So we would like to really look at being more of a one-stop shop, right, where we can do detox in-house, we can do residential in-house, and then all through the levels of care, ideally.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. The other question, as far as intake, how do people find your facility or get referred or what's the mechanism there?
So it's a great question. We have peer supports in the community. We have two in Lebanon Hospital, we have two in the Albany Hospital. They also reach into, the Lebanon ones also reach down into Sweet Home Brownsville and those surrounding areas. So they'll meet with people in the emergency department. They'll send referrals to us to get them assessed. Friends, family, physicians will refer people to us. So as far as the process goes, they get referred to us, they call, they make an appointment, they come in for an assessment. It's about a two-hour appointment. They'll sit down with one of our counselors and go through an assessment. This assessment will determine level of care, whether they need to be in residential, intensive outpatient, or outpatient services. At that point, then we will get them enrolled in whatever level of care that they need to. Like I said, if they're residential, we may need to look at detox first. We may need to get them on the waitlist. And then to detox where they're in intensive outpatient first. And then we'll get them started in services. They meet with their primary counselor at least once a month, depending on a level of care. If they're in the outpatient, which is our lowest level of care, that group is only one day a week. I mean, it's a two-hour group where the intensive outpatient group is three hours, three times a week. So it's like, as it says, intensive outpatient is a lot more intensive. It's a lot more structured. So they meet, like I said, three hours a day, three hours for three days a week. And then residential, they do services morning and afternoon and evenings. They go to outside meetings in a celebrate recovery, stuff like that, to where they can get used to and integrated into community support. And then once, ideally, we're looking at about three months each level of care. So if somebody comes into residential, they spend about three months with us. In residential, they graduate down to intensive outpatient. They do the three months there, and then they move into outpatient, and that's three months, and then they graduate out. And hopefully by that time, they are connected in the recovery community. They have developed the skills that they need to be successful. And I've found home, a play, housing, stuff like that, we work real closely. There are Oxford houses in our area that we get folks into to where they can have some stable housing. Because as we know, homelessness and unhoused is a huge issue that we need to address. Ultimately, down the road, we'd also like to have some kind of housing that we have as well, but again, that's down the road. And funding is very needed for all that. So that's kind of, that kind of answered your question as far as procedure goes.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question about the 50, 54% that don't complete. What puts the most common reason for people to not complete the process to to end up failing out?
I mean, that's a, that's a great question. And sadly, I wish I could say that treatment and recovery first time is the is the time that sticks and it doesn't always, you know, it's if the person isn't 100% into making that that change in their life, then they're going to continue to struggle. I have a patient that I currently have that I've been working with him for two years. And I mean, we're, it should have been done a long time ago, but it's been a long process as far as getting him stable, getting him housing, getting him to a point where he was ready to make the changes to get out of his own way to where he could actually see this is where I need to be and have the proper motivation and have the internal motivation that he was lacking at the time. But now, I mean, he's flourishing. He's so. I I wish that it was an easy fix. I mean, I really do to where we can get folks in and they can get services and they're turned around and ready to go. But sadly, relapse is part of recovery.
And is housing part of that, too?
Yeah, housing's a big piece. I mean, it's it's huge. If if we send, you know, we get people into residential, we get them stable in a structured environment where they know that where they're going to get three meals a day, they're going to have snacks, they got a good bed to sleep in, they've got people around that care about them and they're for their well-being. And then we send them out into the community and they go back to not having housing or being in housing that's not safe, you know, and then it's just a constant cycle. It's what I've seen my entire adult life almost because I've before coming to Samaritan, I worked 25 years with Oregon Health, Oregon Youth Authority at McLaren Youth Correctional Facility. I mean, it was the same thing. We did all this treatment for all these these guys that I worked with at McLaren. And we send them out, but we put them back in the same very bad, dangerous situations. So that's, it's it's rough and I wish we could do more. And that's why I'm like, I'm, you know, looking into the future. If we had housing specifically for our graduates, that'd be fantastic, or even other people, you know, as long as we could provide stable housing, wouldn't necessarily have to be for our graduates, but it would definitely improve our graduates' chances, right?
When you mention or or talk about the completion rate, the positive completion rate, can you explain that more or maybe give an example?
So we're looking at this positive completion rate. That's long-term recovery, right? They've they've gone through our residential program. They've gone through our intensive outpatient program. We've gone through our outpatient program. And then they have been able to find stable housing. They've been able to find stable jobs and continue to move forward. We have two people working in our, for us right now, that are graduates of our residential program that have gone all the way through the steps and they work for us now. So I mean, that's that's a big example of how what we're doing and how it's working. It is working, right? We we just need more resources. We need more. Like right now, we're down counselors. We don't have, we're not fully staffed, but we're doing the best we can. You know, we're doing the best, absolute best we can with what we're providing and what we have available to us. But so as far as completion rate, right, so that's looking at more of a long-term recovery that aren't relapsing back and are coming back through our doors or somebody else's doors, right?
Thank you. Is staffing enough of a problem that it's reducing your capacity?
No, we run full, we have the ability to run with full beds with the staff and we have. I mean, like right now, we typically have for each level of service, we have a male and female counselor. I'm the outpatient counselor. So I'm the one-day-a-week counselor and the DUI counselor. But we have, supposed to have counterparts. Right now, we're down our male residential counselor and our male intensive outpatient counselor. So we're not running a full staff. So our female residential counselor, she's doing a ton of work right now because she has to pull, you know, and and work and and we jump in. We're a family. We're a team. We jump in and help wherever we can to make sure that we're providing the best services possible to the folks that are trusting their lives and their recovery to us, you know, we do what you gotta do to make sure that we're providing the services that's needed.
Thank you.
Would you refresh my memory? I remember the discussion of the 16-bed limit. I mean, if you put, if you had 17 beds, you'd be in a different category and you don't want to be in a different category. Can you kind of go over the rules?
The rules. I mean, I don't know why it was decided on 16 beds. I was not there in the planning process of why it's 16 beds.
I believe that there are limitations on what kind of funding can be provided if you go above 16 beds.
That's probably what it is. And like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't there then, so I can't really speak on that.
It's federal law and you end up in a different category of residential facility. And it's part of that whole de-institutionalization movement that took place when we closed down all of the mental institutions. And the feds decided in their wisdom that 16 was the magic number, that you couldn't have 16 people in a residential facility, or it became something else like a state hospital.
Yeah.
And so it's, and it's not very functional. It's something that would be really nice to be able to change.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, I feel if we had, if we had a residential facility or a Stars in specifically Benton County, I mean, I think we'd be full all the time there, too. I think we would be full in Lebanon, Benton County, and Newport when they're, if they're all up and running, if we had those, all three facilities. I know it'd be.
Yeah, I think advocates for patients and clients would say that these rules were put in place for good reason all around de-institutionalization and getting people back into communities. But yeah, the landscape has certainly changed a great deal and maybe more options are are needed now more than ever.
I completely agree. And looking at what institutionalized folks look like, again, working at McLaren, I saw it. I mean, it's it's rough, you know, and 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 I get the point of it. But that's why we just need more resources, you know, since we have a cap of 16, then we need more buildings. We need more facilities, you know, to to help folks get the services that they need.
And thank you for mentioning prevention as part of that equation because maybe we wouldn't need so many 16-bed facilities or larger if we could prevent some of this. I appreciate the outpatient work that you do and your emphasis on safe and secure housing in that interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, prevention is huge. I mean, that's, it's the only way we're really going to change landscape is by having legitimate conversations about prevention. It doesn't work if we ignore it, right? So it's about having those hard conversations that people don't always want to have with their kids. It's huge. It's important.
All right. Well, it doesn't look like there are any more questions, Scott, but appreciate your report and another piece of the puzzle as far as helping people in that need our help. So appreciate your efforts and and thank you coming and giving us the update.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
And look forward to hearing about the grand opening of the Newport facility in about a year.
Absolutely. And tell me when you're back. I'll be happy to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item four point three, adult drug treatment court steps update on you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. And I appreciate the commissioners for taking the time to do this. I think DA Haroldson indicated he might be here. I don't know if he'll be here or not. I'm not aware of what his schedule is. Go ahead and provide you folks with the update that I can. And as, and I think Administrator Hoffman did give an update to the board in July. Explained where the county was from its side. So I won't go into any of that. I'm assuming that you're providing ongoing information to the commissioners on that part of it. So what I'm going to look at is kind of where we're going from the court side and what we're looking at down the road as far as relationship with the county to achieve the goals that at this point we're looking at. Now, we did recently, I guess, close down the drug treatment court in relationship to having any active participants in it. That occurred in June, I believe, after our policy committee. We are, however, still moving forward with the drug treatment court program. So I guess we could call it in, in a suspended state at this point. In fact, I think we're going to be having a policy committee meeting tomorrow of the drug treatment court members on the steering committee. So the goal at this point is to reorganize the program and to get it restarted again. The, the, the current goal is to have everything in place to be able to develop a C, CJC implementation grant application for September 2024. That just times with the implementation grants that the CJC has to the best of our knowledge right now. That may change, of course. But that's kind of the time horizon at this point. The work to be done between now and then, the critical work is to find a treatment provider for the program. That was the, the reason that the program has discharged its, its active participants because we didn't have a treatment program that could provide treatment compliance with drug treatment court best practices. So that's going to be one of our initial, you know, one kind of our job one. That's something that we'll be discussing in our policy committee coming up. The other issue that, and this is really not one of the reasons that led to the program closing, but if we're, if we're going to reconstitute the program, it seems doing it with, with as robust a program as far as best practices go is, is, is appropriate. So one of the things that I'm anticipating doing between now and September 2024 is doing some substantial public outreach because while we do have a policy committee, we don't have an advisory board. And that is another one of your drug treatment court, kind of the administrative best practices. And that advisory board is, is much, it's, it's not the day-to-day operation stakeholders. It's more of the community and bringing the community stakeholders and the community resources and the, the representation from the different groups who may be served by the treatment court program into the program a little closer. So that's another one of the goals as far as things to do between now and any implementation grant application. So those are two things that we'll be talking about on the, on the steering committee as far as moving those forward. Now, one of the things that we are going to have to, you know, to discuss at the county level is grant administration and grant application. Now, we can go find a treatment court provider. We can go stand up an advisory board. But just the way that the grant application requirements are at this point for the CJC and, and for most of the, the federal grants, there needs to be a grant app. The grant application process needs to occur outside of the court itself and normally would be with the counties. So there is going to need to be a grant writing resource. Now that, you know, there's information and assistance that can be provided, of course, by a treatment court coordinator. But the actual putting together and submitting of the grant is going to have to be something that is going to have to be done by the county. And the administration of the grant would be something the county would need to be doing as well, of course, as the app. For most of the treatment court grants, including I believe the CJC grant, there is an administrative offset. And I think it can be up to 10%. I think the federal grants and the CJC grant are, I think, are in alignment on that. So as far as the cost of grant administration, I believe there are funds baked into most of these grants that we would be going for that would offset any county costs for that. But we would need the county to provide that application resource. So, and I think that's a conversation we need to have relatively quickly because without that grant application resource, there really isn't much of a point to doing all the work. If we, you know, so doing a year and a half's worth of work and coming to the point of, okay, we're ready to apply. Now, you know, who is going to do it? And we don't have that grant application resource. That's, you know, that's pretty much wasted work. So while we'll be doing a lot of the work on the court side, and again, there's question marks. Identifying a treatment provider is going to be a big, a big issue. We have, we have some treatment providers here in the currently serving in the Benton County area. We'll be approaching them. If those aren't a good fit, we'll be needing to look maybe outside the area, looking at local nonprofits as far as maybe some, starting something up. I don't know what that's going to look like. Again, we're kind of at the head of those conversations. Commissioner Ojo.
It's not only the grant application and the formal grantee, but it's also contract administration, isn't it? So because the county has been responsible for managing that treatment provider contract as well.
Right. And that would be, again, the grant administration because that, the grant administration would include that contract. And that would be, I think, will be rolled into that kind of 10% administrative.
And one of my other questions is, is is it an OJD limitation that keeps the courts from being able to be the actual grantee and manager of these programs? Or is it a state and federal barrier?
Well, the Oregon Judicial Department is working, and I don't know at what pace as far as grant writing capacity. But the majority of the grants require the, the grant application from counties or from some other organization other than the courts. So I think that what we're looking at here is kind of a structural issue that to some extent is beyond the judicial department's ability to address because these are grant requirements. The goal, I guess, or the, the policy is wanting to ensure a collaborative participation between, you know, the counties and the courts because the counties are going to have, you know, just attorney's office or, you know, probation. A lot of times they would provide other services like treatment. But again, I don't think even if OJD was a, you know, was standard, stood up a full grant writing capacity, I, I, there may be some of the, some, there, I think would be some aspect of grant writing and application and management that would still be required as, as part of the grants themselves to be submitted and managed by a third party, which normally would be a county. It could be a tribe, could be a state, but it would again have to be that governmental actor.
Thank you.
And, and so again, I, if anyone has any specific questions, but again, the goal here is to, to get the program back up and running. But we will be doing it after we get, after we do a significant amount of work. It will involve, again, identifying a treatment court provider, hopefully getting an advisory board stood up. But I guess the one question we're going to have to answer at the head of this is do we have that grant writing capacity at the, at the county level? Because without that, we're going to have, you know, we're, we're going to be basically without a necessary part of the implementation grant resources that we're going to have. And so again, that's one of the things that we would need to have relatively near-term discussion on while we're moving forward on these other issues. So if anyone has any questions on that, and I think that we've, we've been talking about a couple of different things with the program. I think one of the issues that was addressed earlier in the year was census of the program. I think DA Haroldson's provided you some information about that. So that I guess is another one of the things we can look at as part of that long-term reorganization is, is admission. And, and, you know, are we in compliance with best practices on that as far as identifying the high-risk, high-need groups? Are we using objective criteria to admit? And so those are all going to be conversations we'll be having as, as part of, you know, reorganizing the program. But I'm, I'm pretty confident, I, I was, you know, our numbers, I think, were improving for a while, but again, we've had a couple of issues. I think measure one ten's been one of the issues. We've had a district, a public defender shortage. We've had the COVID docketing issue. We've, so there's been, there've been quite a few things that have kind of worked against treatment courts here in Benton County and around the state. I think some of those hopefully will be resolved at that time. And I am confident that we do have a population of high-risk, high-need folks here in the community that aren't going to benefit, you know, that, that probation, I don't think we'll be able to provide the necessary services for. If we do send them to, you know, the Department of Corrections, they will be back in our community with the same drug and alcohol and mental health issues that they left with. The overwhelming majority of individuals in the Department of Corrections don't get that treatment. And we'll be right back into that recidivist cycle. So I think this would be, you know, again, as I mentioned previously, money spent here at the head of this will be, I think, a positive investment. I know that sequential intercept model is going to, the county is, is going to now have a significant gap in it regarding post-conviction diversion programs because the treatment court program was the only thing that we had. So getting it back as quickly as possible to give the county that diversion opportunity and resource is, I think, important. And that's why the timeline is, is as aggressive as it is. I think that September 2024 is really the, the earliest we could potentially hope to stand up a feasible implementation grant application, given, given the, the things we're going to need to address between now and that implementation grant application. So does anyone have any questions at this point?
On the implementation grant, how often is that available? I mean, you're talking about September?
Yeah, I think it's by, it's, it's, it's a CJC grant, so I think it's on a biennium basis. But I, the implementation grants, their application deadlines are on a little bit different timeline than their sustainability grants. The sustainability grants, I think, are due normally in June of the odd years. I think these implementation grants are a little bit different. So, but I believe, I believe they're biennium grants. So I believe we would be doing it for a two-year, a two-year period.
Okay. But if we weren't ready in, for the September 24 implement, implementation grant, what's the next?
That I would have to check on. I, I've been essentially looking at this point at what would be our earliest feasible timeline. I think September 2023, I think there may have been an opportunity for that. I don't know. My, our drug treatment court coordinator, Kate Johnson, was the person who was doing the research on that. Because we've closed down the treatment court program or suspended the drug treatment court program, she's moved over to working on, on some other issues as far as family treatment court development and our aid and assist program. So at this point, we won't have her as a resource. But I can get some additional information as to the CJC implementation grants. We can get that to the folks as far as. If we can't do it in September 2024, is September 2025 an option? And I don't, I don't know at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, as I mentioned, we're going to be, we're going to be having a policy committee meeting this coming Wednesday. What I'd like to do at this point is, is maybe talk with the policy committee a little bit, figure out what we have for treatment court resources, and then maybe if possible, come back and talk with you folks in a couple of months. I know you are in the middle of getting things kind of organized now as far as, you know, fiscal year. And just to confirm as to whether or not those grant writing resources will be available. I, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot on that today. But again, without those, I don't think we can really move forward effectively on, on that implementation grant program. And I don't want to, you know, we have, you know, this is going to be, you know, we're going to have a lot of stakeholders here. Policy committee's been great. I've, I've heard a lot of enthusiasm on it for getting the program back up and running. And I don't, you know, and, and I just want to make sure that we have, you know, as many of the pieces together as quickly as we can get them. Again, which is why we'll be pretty aggressive about looking at treatment court providers and, and getting advisory, you know, redoing public outreach. Getting just the, the confirmation as to whether we have the grant writing resources as quickly as possible. So we kind of know what the feasibility is. It would be something that would be, you know, great if we could get that.
My gut sense is that it's not necessarily the grant writing expertise that is the challenge. It's the ongoing grant administration piece. And so I think that that's something we just need to talk about more.
And I think for the grant administration, again, we, there is, there are, there are resources for that. I think usually, if I remember the CJC, they had about a 10% overhead for grant writing. And I know that that was something that we've, that we've discussed with the county historically. If we don't have those resources available, then we really don't have a treatment court program. Because without applying for those grants, we aren't going to be able to maintain the program. It won't be, you know, that, that's kind of where we are. So I know it's a rather blunt question, but I'm afraid it's one we need to ask kind of at the head of this process if we're going to have any, any chance of success.
I believe that Rick Gregor, our CFO, attends the policy committee.
Right. And I believe Rick is on the policy committee, so.
And I think he's prepared to listen carefully to what the committee comes up with as well as everything that he's talking about today. And I know he's making notes about questions we may need to have answers to from grant writing to grant administration to contract administration. Rick, if you wanted.
Yeah, ju- just a couple of comments, Commissioner. So thank you, Judge, for, for your, your presentation. And the judge is exactly right. You know, the, the dollars that we get from CJC do offer a 10% admin. I believe that is the max amount on most of their grants. I think, you know, part of the challenge is, and what we usually find with many of these federal grants as well, they offer 10%. That's not nearly enough usually to cover what the true cost is. And I think part of the exercise as we go through looking at a grant application, it all depends on, of course, what the total amount of the, what we call direct services will be and how much we can generate from an admin standpoint. But, you know, based on kind of some early looks in terms of how we've done, done the work in the past, I'm guessing that we're, we're probably going to be a little short in terms of the federal grant covering all the costs. So the county will likely, based on our cost analysis that we do at that time of, of working with, with the committee, have to likely subsidize some portion of the administration. Again, hard to really know until, of course, you get into the actual grant and what the program needs to look like, what the direct costs are. But that's sort of the, the traditional what we see. It wouldn't surprise me that, you know, usually the 10%, usually you're seeing admin anywhere between 15 and 20% on a lot of programs. But again, it just always depends on size. That helps.
Oh. Let's see. The, the cost is half the battle. Do we have the staff to administer, you know, apply and administer the grant?
Yeah, I, you know, again, it's, the devil's always in the detail, right? So until you kind of get in and see exactly how the program's design is, you know, from, from the discussions we've had as a policy committee and what I've heard from Judge Sean Hugh, that, you know, we would be looking at a contract type relationship as opposed to, you know, the direct staff. So there'd be, you know, some contract administration associated with obviously all the payables and the grant management associated with, with the cost. I think from a staffing standpoint, I'm sure, you know, I think we're built pretty well, you know, with a grant manager at this point. But again, like I said, until I really see, you know, the different requirements of the particular grant, we have successfully been able to provide sort of the core grant management responsibilities under the old model with our existing staffing. So I would anticipate from the core standpoint, we would be able to continue to provide that. But again, this may be a different grant. There may be some different requirements. We'd have to really closely look at that. So the answer is yes, I believe, but, you know, until I get a chance to really examine the whole body of work, it's hard to know.
But it sounds like no matter what, the county would be subsidizing the, the cost of.
Again, I'm giving you my best professional opinion based on my experience with size of grants and what I've seen with federal grants in the past. It's not uncommon that, you know, these federal admin dollars, the percentages are not usually enough. It's, it's, it's helpful. Don't get me wrong. We certainly could use it and it offsets what the cost is. But traditionally, it's just usually not enough to be able to. But traditionally, it's just usually not enough to be able to cover the actual costs that goes into it. And again, last thing I would say in terms of the calculation, some of the, the things that we see with our, when we're looking at in what I often call indirect cost, some of the factors that influence that is, is people. So, so using our current, our old model, there's a lot of behavioral health staff. So there's the human resource. Under a contracted situation, you don't have the people. So again, there will be factors that actually reduce the overhead costs that we would traditionally see in the old model. I'm sorry to keep kind of wavering a little bit, but until you sort of see, obviously, some of the, the mechanics of it, we wouldn't really know. But I have to believe that, you know, cost-wise, it, it's, it's not gonna be what we see now because you have less human resources. Certainly, it's hard for me to imagine that the federal grant would probably cover all of it.
And it would only cover it for a limited period of time.
Well, it would generally, I believe the dinner would cover it for the life, you know, the 10% is generally for the life of the grant.
Well, yeah, but all I'm saying is that our experience with federal grants has been that they're great, but they end. And so that's what precipitated a lot of this in the first place was the, the ending of federal grant funds that were plenty of money to run the program, but that when, once we were reliant only on the CJC grant, that was a real challenge.
Well, and I think at this point, one of the other things that we're looking at as far as rebuilding the program is to address that sustainability issue. Again, we wouldn't have the county as a partner for any kind of drug and alcohol treatment. So we would have it on a contract basis. I think if you go back to the SAMSo grant, that was a contract basis treatment provider service. So I think there is some, and I, but I believe at that point, it was in the law enforcement budget. So I think that that would be where you'd have to go dig it out. But I think there are some numbers back there for the administrative costs for the federal grant for a contract services provider. But the bigger issue is, is, is that whether or not we get a federal grant or not, your point is, is well-taken that that's an implementation grant. And so with the CJC grant, it would be an implementation grant. So whenever we're, we're looking at this from the context of, okay, well, we want the program to outlive any grant, we're gonna need to look at it from a sustainability piece. Well, the sustainability plan that we had was to, you know, move to the county to provide the mental health and treatment court services. That didn't work. So we now have to look at what is a different sustainability plan for going off the end of, say, a federal SAMSo or BJA grant and, and having, or CJC implementation grant, having the CJC sustainability grant be the, the kind of the stopgap for the program. And that, I think, is one of the goals of the Advisory Committee Development is to work with identifying and developing community resources, which may be available to support the program. And in doing so, there's a couple, a couple of different goals, one of which is broadening the program's reach and in the community as far as maybe identifying individuals who might be high-risk, high-needs people to participate in it, but also to develop a deeper resource pool. And now, you know, it's not going to involve resource, you know, treatment providers, most likely. But what it would develop, what we would, may have in the community are services, the ancillary RAP-type services that we may be able to identify and develop, which could potentially offset those long-term costs. The other thing we need to do is work more towards bringing things in line. And I, and I, I think this is more of a CJC issue than anything with treatment court costs versus reimbursement rates. And again, that's what we're kind of looking at is, is can we, again, that's a, that's a CJC limitation as to what they'll pay for. They're moving, from my understanding, more towards having, you know, medic, you know, OHP cover costs of services. That generally is not a model that most private treatment corp, treatment service providers utilize. There's usually some other cost offset, especially for high-risk, high-needs treatment. So again, that's another conversation to be had as to how do we set this model up for a third-party contract treatment provider that would use, you know, what would we have for, for resources to utilize? Understanding we'd have OHP cost recovery and then looking at what we would have for CJC cost recovery, if any. And then looking at that as kind of the sustainability target for any program development. And we also, again, would have that mental health treatment component, which would most likely remain, you know, a county referral-type system, at least for the foreseeable future. But again, that would be a separate issue that we'd be addressing once the program. And thank you, Rick, for the information. So any other questions at this point?
I guess, just to comment, the fairly sure we need more information both about progress on future opportunities. And then from the county side, what's our capacity? And as you get more information about grant specifics, get information back to us about it, just how feasible or what the cost of the county ultimately be.
And Commissioners, Judge Donahue said, you sit on the, the committee with the group and certainly will see myself participating with the judge and as well as the rest of the team in terms of doing this analysis, obviously helping to kind of put a cost so that we have a full understanding. So I plan to continue to work and partner with the judge and the rest of the committee in helping us to see where we go. But you are correct, you know, there's more analysis that needs to be done. And I think that's kind of what Judge is alluding to here, probably over the next 12 months to really dive deep into. So I'll assure you that I will be with them and help them to support.
And again, what I'd like to do though is at some point, hopefully be able to come back after, maybe in a couple of months, after we've had the policy committee, some policy committee discussions about where we're going and kind of what roles we're looking at as far as the court, the county, the other community partners. And just talk a little bit more about that, that grant-writing resource. Because the issue, and I understand the concern that as far as, you know, what, what the cost is gonna be. But again, if we don't have that grant-writing resource, the work to be, you know, the, the, there, there really is no work to be done because there is no program to be funded, because the grants are going to fund them. So there isn't, there isn't kind of a head-of-the-process question we do need to answer regarding those grant-writing resources. And I, I completely agree with, with Rick. There's gonna be a part of that grant-writing administration that probably the county will need to subsidize. I don't, you know, we can get maybe some, some historic numbers to bring back. But again, the, the, you know, these treatment court programs, there's a startup cost, there's implementation costs. They're gonna be higher than other programs primarily because you're front-loading treatment services and RAP services with hopefully reductions to your criminal justice program through decreased jail costs, district attorney costs, probation costs, community health costs, public safety costs. So again, maybe if we could have those conversations with the policy committee for a few months, come back to you folks with maybe a little bit clearer focus as to what that grant-writing resource that we would need would be. And then have a conversation as to whether that's something the county would be, be able to subsidize. That would, again, be one of those kind of head-of-the-process discussions, I think, we'd have. Because it gives us a little bit more of an idea on the policy committee, what we're looking at as far as resources we can use to, to rebuild the program that they're going.
Commissioner Wise?
Well, just state that I do, I would like to see the Adult Drug Treatment Court come back and, and be a service that we can provide in Benton County. So I look forward to the deeper dive and finding out more information and seeing if it's feasible. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for all your attention and time. And I know that everyone comes and asks you for money. So I'm hoping that we can turn this, though, into more of an investment. So I think that, you know, we are, and again, I think the SIM, SIM development that we've had here a long time in process, we've done, I think, a lot of really good things here in the county as far as our pre-trial release and our intercept zero interventions. And I would really hate to have, you know, us be spending the resources and time, energy to build those SIM resources and kind of, while at the same time, losing our only post-conviction diversion part of that model. Because, you know, it's generally trying to build the whole thing up as opposed to playing whack-a-mole. And I, and I know how frustrating that can be. Thanks again for your time. So what I'll do is, I guess, Rick, we'll, we'll talk a little bit on the policy committee and maybe in a couple, in late fall or so, we can come back here and hopefully then have things a little bit more in focus for you folks as far as where we're going and talk a little bit more then if you're, if you're meaningful to that.
Looking forward to that and getting more information and just kind of defining where we're headed.
Thank you very much. And have a good afternoon, folks. And I gotta run back to get going on trial at one, so.
Thank you. All right, next up, Department reports and requests, 6.1 Sustainable Materials Management Plan, draft requests for proposals. Maybe? No wonder I missed it. Thank you. All right, next up is a considerable consent calendar. Your motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Are you happy now, Vance? Okay. Now, 6.1 Sustainable Materials Management Plan, Darren Nichols, Daniel Reddick, and Sean McGuire.
Good afternoon.
Just a reminder, you have to get fairly close to the microphone for.
Yep.
Be happy.
Okay, thank you. All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us again. Happy to provide an update today. Want to frame this a little bit before we get started. I think it would be helpful to understand if we just remind ourselves where we are in the process. What we're talking about today are the next steps to implement the recommendations coming out of the Benton County Talk Trash Work Group and the direction of the board to develop an RFP, Request for Proposal, specifically that would put together a consulting team to advise all of us on the development of a long-term sustainable materials management plan. It's important to kind of remind ourselves where we are in the process because what we're gonna ask you to do today is take the next four steps. And those are steps that we feel like you need to take to get us to where we need to be, which is towards a long-term sustainable materials plan. But that, that plan isn't gonna unfold immediately. It's gonna take a little bit of time over the next couple of years. And I anticipate that we'll be back with the next steps. I'll probably be providing next steps, recommendations back to you over the, over the course of that development of that plan. So really, this is part of a shift from the way that we've thought about solid waste to how we need to be thinking about materials and sustainable materials going forward. And so really, we're talking about shifting the frame from a solid waste framework to a sustainable materials management framework. The reason that's important to kind of get that perspective in mind is that solid waste implies really end-of-life care for materials. It, it basically anticipates, it anticipates landfilling or some other kind of end-of-life outcome for materials. We would like to shift that thinking to more of a cradle-to-cradle, kind of a life cycle analysis, a much more holistic view, similar to the way that the state of Oregon has adjusted its legislation with Senate Bill 582, some of the producer responsibility, some of the alternative ways of handling materials and thinking about materials, we think will also help Benton County not only deal with our own materials, but also is one of the biggest ways that we can have a positive impact at Coffin-Butte landfill. So taking the pressure off of the landfill as, as the preferred alternative. So what we've laid out here is a series of clear next steps. You'll see there are four motions and there's just a little bit of, of kind of explanation about what those motions are gonna ask you to do. The first is asking you to provide any input, direction, guidance that you feel is needed on a revised request for proposal. The draft that you have in front of you really incorporates feedback from a temporary committee. And I want to say thank you again to the eight individuals and to Daniel and to Sean for helping. Put that together, I think there was a lot of really good discussion over the last two or three weeks about how to improve that request for proposal. Secondly, is a request that you authorize the appointment of an ad hoc Sustainable Materials Management Committee. The idea here is to expand the level of expertise, the regional representation, and really provide a much more robust group of people to advise you and us and a consultant team on how best to develop a sustainable materials management plan. The third step then is really related to that is to dissolve the existing solid waste advisory committee in the form that you've known it to date. Keep the disposal site advisory committee in place. That's the statutory responsibility piece of our existing governance structure. Keep those individuals and that structure in place to advise the board and to fulfill our statutory responsibilities relating to Coffin-Butte landfill. I think that's an important point. But at least for the term, for the duration of the Sustainable Materials Management Planning process, we feel like it would be helpful and frankly vital for us to have a, a much wider range of voices and expertise in advising us during that time. If you look at the RFP, you'll see too that there's a, there's a part of it that asks the consulting team to make recommendations on a long-term governance structure for sustainable materials. So what we're proposing today is not the permanent governance solution. It really is an interim governance solution that is both manageable for us and for you and begins to move us towards what we hope will be a model for longer-term governance of solid waste. Related to that then, the proposed motion three is, in addition to dissolving the current structure of, of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, is to adopt some, a charge for the ad hoc committee that's consistent with existing disposal site and solid waste advisory committee roles, but weaves those in with a sustainable materials management plan process. We don't have that ready to put in front of you today, but we're asking you to direct us or authorize us to do that. And then when we come back with a final version of the RFP, we'd like to also bring back a draft charge for your consideration so you can kind of see how the roles will fit together. And I feel confident that we can do that seamlessly. But that's kind of the, one of the pieces that is important. And we're asking you to do that today. And then finally, the proposed motion four is really picks up on your suggestions that you should listen to the, take some time to intentionally listen to the community. And so we're suggesting that if, if that sounds good, if you're still of a mind to do that, provide some direction to us to begin putting together a listening session. And with details to be determined, but something that we can bring back to you in September. And we're suggesting that that listening session happen probably in September, early October, and that it really be focused on how best to use community input in this sustainable materials management planning process over the next couple of years to increase and build on the Benton County Talk Trash work that's been done, to capitalize on this unique, once-in-a-generation opportunity to build a sustainable materials management plan and also to continue to, to make good on your commitment and ours to increase transparency, visibility, and input of the community. So last but not least, you'll see just a quick status update, kind of recap of where we are. We've completed the work. last but not least, you'll see just a quick status updated, kind of recap of where we are. We've completed the work of an exploratory advisory group. You appointed those interim or temporary task force members. They convened meetings in July and early August. And if, have incorporated those, their feedback into an RFP, which you see here as a, an attachment. Daniel can answer questions. Daniel, Sean can answer, answer questions about that process or the RFP. And so here we are today, asking you to take these four next steps. Then if that is acceptable to the board, then we will be back to you September 5th with a final draft RFP, asking for your direction to release that RFP and begin the process of interviewing, selecting a consultant. And then of course, like I just mentioned, that at some point in September, October, scheduling a listening session. So, Daniel and Sean, what did I miss? Happy to answer questions or take direction from the board at this point.
Any questions for analysts?
Well, it's hard to know where to start, but I, I was I, I'm pleased with the shape of the RFP. I think it's really robust and it's looking at the notes from the ad hoc RFP task force. It's very clear to see where their comments were integrated into the request for proposals. That makes me happy. I'm, it's reassuring to me that we are actually listening to community voice as we move forward. I have a kind of a funny comment and then a question. On page five, where there's a nice graphic of Benton County's regulatory control and then collaborative control. And then the kind of extenuating circumstances, we can't really deal with very directly in our timeframe. The narrative says regularity control. I'm sure that's one of those spell check errors, but you might want to change that.
Yes. With apologies to the Commissioner.
It made me laugh. On the other hand, you could keep it for humor and see who, who discovers it as you go through the process. I think my biggest question is two things, one comment. I'm glad that we did add a disposal section into the lifecycle analysis because it is part of the lifecycle. And that there is a little bit more emphasis on disposal technologies or approaches or whatever, because landfill isn't the only thing out there. And all of those intermediate steps, you know, a Murph or whatever is part of that process too. So thank you for that. The, with, when it comes to the lifecycle analysis per se, you know, it's, it's very challenging to put together a lifecycle analysis for any single product, you know, let alone for the whole suite of materials that end up in our landfill. So I guess my biggest question is about how we will pick and choose the products that would be in any kind of an analysis to get the best bang for the buck. And I'll prioritize the most actionable ones that will make a difference. And the two waste streams that I see called out here so far are the construction and demolition debris, which is no brainer because there's a lot of it and it's bulky. And food waste because of the, the methane outcome of any kind of biological waste. I was also happy to see the call out on medical waste and on other kinds of toxic wastes because I think those are waste streams that we really should be more aware of and aware of the options. And I think that we, as the franchise can never remember franchisee franchisor. The franchise, franchiser, that we should have some control over perhaps saying what waste streams we will accept and what we won't. And that that's how I see us really leveraging the sustainable materials management plan is by saying, you know, we, with limited landfill capacity, even with expansion, there are certain things that just shouldn't be here. So I guess I'm asking you to, I'm making a lot of commentary, but also asking you to help me. Maybe we need a little bit more clarifying language here about the fact that whoever is responding to this call for proposals is going to need to pose how they prioritize the work and how they kind of class and cluster those lifecycle analyses.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ojo. Totally agreed. This is, it's a, it's a big challenge, obviously. There's a lot of moving parts. We're going to have to be efficient with how we spend our time and resources. I want to offer three things in response because I think, I think this is built in. The first is an intentional first step is to work with the preferred contractor on a scope of work. And I think that that's, that stepwise process will give us a chance to benefit from the expertise and the experience of, of the team that we choose to get their thoughts on this. So how do we, how big do we try to make this effort? And how do we be strategic about what we approach and when? So that we are addressing the biggest needs and the most urgent needs first, and then working towards those other needs as well. Secondly, I think that little graphic on page seventy nine, if you're picking it, or on page five of the draft RFP really tells a story that I sort of glossed over in my opening statements, but I think it's very important for us to realize that our span of regulatory control is not unlimited. In fact, it's fairly finite. And I think we've learned that through the recent conditional use permit process, the subsequent Benton County Talk Trash Work Group process, we've learned a lot about some of the limitations of what we can do as a single county using regulatory tools. It's not enough to address the size, the scope of the challenges or the opportunities. And so the way we've framed this up is a way for us to use the landfill and our role as a franchise participant to leverage that through collaborative relationships with other counties. So that we're working together to address the issues that you just described. And I believe that as this unfolds, we'll learn a lot more about where our partnerships are, where our shared interests are, and how Oregon counties can work together to address these issues on a collaborative basis. Our sincere belief is that there is far more reach, if you will, for Benton County in that collaborative space than we ever could accomplish through codes and regulations. Similarly, and part of the reason that we've suggested that the SMMP needs to address long-term governance is that we don't, we don't have this figured out yet. We don't know exactly what and how we need to be structured and who our partners need to be and how they need to interact with Benton County. But what we do know is that we are much better working together than we are alone. And so I think that taking this in that kind of stepwise approach, I hope will address the concerns and ambitions that you've laid out as a commissioner, but also as a board. And I think what the community is asking us to do, which is to look forward and make the biggest dent we possibly can in our collective responsibility to manage our materials more responsibly.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for your work on this and for the volunteers that made up that group. And I think what you said is, is completely right, Darren, about this has really been a learning a learning exercise for us all. We've been examining, learning, and therefore changing and growing. So just more change and growth to come.
Well, I would second the large thank you for staff and volunteers that have hung in there on this process and really done an amazing job of helping us define the problem and now figuring out how to, how to move forward. And you know, it's been a few months since the end of the Talking Trash effort. And I, I think that time has been well spent on developing the, the next stages. And I really appreciate your simple drawing of regulatory and in the packet is on page seventy nine. And I will print that out and put it on my wall because then that you know, we get comments from community members, well, do this or, you know, tell them to, they can't do that. And, and well, we have limited authority. And with the chart, it says, well, yes. The regulatory piece is this big, but what we can get from our partners and the community is, is much stronger and will have much more influence. And now it's moving forward to try to clarify and define what that, what that role is. This is exciting. I usually don't get excited about talking about this, but the next just that we're on the, the verge of getting the information that, that we need to do our jobs. Thank you all, all around. I guess the other, well, I'll save that, but this is I, I appreciate the deliberative process and not just, well, send out an RFP and get something back, but really work on defining what we want so that we have a much better chance of getting what we want going, going forward. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like at this point, I need to give Daniel credit for putting together the graphic and doing the heavy lifting. He and Sean and Vance have been working hard to make sure this is it's, it's the right thing for our community and it's also prepares us for the next steps. So special thanks to them. Also shout out to Gary Stockoff and the team over at Public Works for sharing their expertise and experience with RFPs. Gary provided some timely and very helpful kind of insights and wisdom. I think partly because Commissioner Ojo had said he might talk to your colleagues. So thank you for that. It's very much a team effort. I know you're hearing a lot from me today, but the work is, goes far beyond even our department. And I think it will need to continue to do that. It's just going to be a team effort. And so I turn the thanks back around to the board for being willing to go down a, a new and different path. It's, it's not a place we've been before. And, but I feel really good about the direction that we're headed and appreciate your leadership.
Are we ready for a motion on the RFP? I move to accept the revised request for proposal and direct staff to incorporate the board's discussion into a revised final draft request for proposal. For the board to consider and authorize the release of the final request for proposal at its regularly scheduled meeting on September 5th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, what do you want to do?
Would you like me to make the next motion? Or do you want to have more conversation? I move to authorize the creation of an ad hoc sustainable materials management committee and direct staff to prepare and present to the Board of Commissioners a list of proposed ad hoc committee members, including for consideration as appropriate current members of the solid waste process work group and disposal site advisory committee and to draft a formal committee charge.
Second, and I would like an opportunity for discussion. Given that SWAC is in county code right now, I just want to ask the question about process with respect to our current code. We, by retaining DSAC, disposal site advisory committee are in compliance with state law. And I think that again, that as we'll be discussing shortly, there needs to be some realignment of what SWAC and DSAC were doing because I think a little bit of what SWAC was doing could be passed off to disposal site advisory committee and therefore not lose things. But just the code question. So it's probably a question for Vance.
So the, the question about whether the code needs to be amended to accomplish the, the recommended proposals, the answer is no. We have, the area we are most constrained in, it relates to DSAC because as you noted, that's a statutory committee. Our committees, the board has the authority to delegate functions that might have originally been delegated to DSAC. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, SWAC. And it is the contemplation that, that we've had over conversations that some of the responsibilities our code calls out will be delegated to the ad hoc committee. Some will be delegated to DSAC. And the charge that comes forward should clarify which elements of the code are being delegated to the ad hoc committee and which and within the, maybe not in the charge, but in the agenda checklist. Description of those that are being delegated to DSAC and some that may not actually be fulfilled in the interim.
And then, and that charge is actually in, I think, the next motion. So I, I'm, I'm happy with that discussion.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion number two carries.
Okay. And I'd be happy to make the third motion. I understand that it is challenging for some community members to hear this, but I think that in light of the discussion we've had and all the documentation that's been provided, we're not intending to eliminate any opportunity for community engagement. What we're intending to do is make sure that we don't have three different committees that staff have to contend with during this labor-intensive process that we're envisioning, but that we have only two. And that the disposal site advisory committee and the new ad hoc sustainable materials management advisory committee will each pick up some of that work that SWAC was doing. So with that, I move to dissolve the Benton County Solid Waste Advisory Committee effective immediately and direct staff to develop a committee charge for each, the DSAC and the ad hoc committee that's consistent with the roles of the solid waste advisory council and the disposal site advisory committee. Sorry. I interjected something that didn't need to be interjected. But I think that Erica, if you look at the motion as written in the document, that's just fine.
Second. I'll just say too, as I mentioned before, you know, we are changing and growing. And of course, this is not any sort of attempt to squash public engagement or upset anybody. It's really just that we are changing, growing, and finding new ways to be more effective.
Well, and along those lines, we've had a probably more than ever public engagement. I remember several months back, a room full of people here talking about this and motion number four talks about public engagement. So probably i- if anything, we're trying to have more and wider public engagement going forward. So I, staff was to be commended for that. That approach.
I think the other point is that that whole area on the graphic, collaborative influence, really cannot be obtained without a larger ad hoc solid sustainable materials management advisory committee. That is what's going to give us the punch that we need.
All right. Motion number three has been, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to motion number four.
I'm happy to make this one. I move to direct staff to develop a listening session concept and present options to the board for consideration at its September 5th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of motion number four, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any last comments or? Any last comments or now that we've given you a lot of work to do?
It's no more work than we've been doing. Thank you. So thank you very much for taking time to walk through that with us. I think we have what we need to move forward. I would just ask the board to help us and help the community understand that we're moving from a kind of a laser focus on Coffin Butte landfill as a landfill, as a disposal site, to a much bigger table where we have new partners and a much stronger influence over the entire waste shed for the state of Oregon. And as we, as we kind of back out and look at that bigger table, the disposal site is very much a piece of that conversation and we know that. And we, and we care deeply about that part. This gives us far more tools to address that, that piece of it. And we've said this a number of times already, but I think there will be some fear, there is some fear in the community that that, that might get lost in the conversation. I just want to reassure the board and the community, that is the reason why we are taking this approach. And I know it's new, I know it's different. We are growing, but we will not lose sight of the importance of addressing the landfill at Coffin Butte. And the conversations that we've had so far with colleagues at DEQ and with the community members here and with the staff team and with board members, I feel very good about the direction we're going. I feel like we should have had these tools in place in the seventies and the eighties and the nineties. We didn't. We can't do much about that, but what we can do is make a difference going forward. And we are 100% committed to that.
All right, last comment from me is I wanted to compliment staff on this packet. It was extremely well put together and logical, and it made it very easy to assimilate a lot of material. So thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and like Commissioner Ojero said, well organized. Would have been easy to get lost in there without a good organization. So thank you for that. Looking forward to seeing you back here in three weeks to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
On a lighter note, 6.2 service recognition for interim county administrator Suzanne Hoffman. Sounds like she's done. We have two more weeks. What? No, very much appreciate you stepping in when we needed some help last March. And we're fairly smoothly because you were going to retire from the health department anyway. So didn't leave too much of a gaping hole there that we would have if, if we'd had to take some of our other options. And personally, I appreciate that you are not coasting towards the finish line. You, you are as engaged as ever, which is what we need. We've got a lot going on and county administrator is critical in coordinating our efforts. And you've done a great job and I expect that to continue for these last two weeks.
Well, I would like to echo Commissioner Malone's comments. I'm very grateful to have had the honor and privilege of working with you for the last several months. It's, as Commissioner Malone said, not been a quiet time. There's been a lot going on and that's not going to slow down much based on our agendas. So I think I'm just wishing you the best and hope that you will have a wonderful retirement, not too quiet and not too busy with plenty of time to do just what you want to do.
Well, I would like to thank you for your dedication and your service to Benton County. It's much appreciated. I appreciate it. You have come through in very tough times and you are someone who is tough and compassionate. And I think you've, you've done a great job being a leader, leading by example. You're someone to look up to for many employees in Benton County, but I myself have looked to you as an example. So I really appreciate your, your service. You are my hero, shiro, an unnecessarily feminine version of hero, but so thank you.
Well, thank you so much. It's been my pleasure to fill in these last six months following Joe's departure. As you know, I came to Benton County in October of 2020 on what was going to be no more than a two-year assignment, really to hopefully be a bridge to when it would be a better time, an easier time to recruit for a health department director. And it's been my pleasure to, been here for almost three years now. But yes, I really am leaving at the end of August and I feel like there's such a strong team here, a strong team of department directors, elected officials, county employees, and of course, one of the most engaged communities in terms of our community members that I think is anywhere in the state. So it's been my pleasure and my honor to be able to end my public service after a long career in Benton County and undoubtedly the most satisfying experience of my entire career. So thank you.
I see our sheriff in the background. Did you want to say something? Don't be shy, come on up.
Been told they don't need him though. I just wanted to say thank you as well, Suzanne. When I started here, I kind of, it was trial by fire as the new sheriff. And you and I had the opportunity to present to some groups and you just, you exhibited such grace and you're articulate and you're patient and you made me feel better as well sitting, if you recall, you sat next to me at all the presentations. I have no idea why, but thank you. It really did put me at ease as well. I brought you an office challenge coin and it's a challenge coin and you really did step up to the challenge. You know, these last six months have been pretty trying in Benton County. You stepped up and you took the helm willingly. You didn't have to, and you did. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff. And I would, if I didn't say it earlier, just Suzanne volunteered for this job. I'm recalling Joe's explanation of kind of laying out the future. And he did not ask you maybe on Friday afternoon and you checked in with him Sunday after getting to think this over a little bit and volunteered to extend, extend your service to Benton County. So really appreciate that. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize our next interim county administrator who will have a much shorter stint fill in for the month of September. And then our shiny new county administrator, Rachel, from the other Albany will be joining us. So I think we've been well served by our people willing to step up. Thank you.
I would like to thank Rick for not only stepping up next, but I, I made it really clear to Joe that I wouldn't be willing to take this on if Rick Craigor weren't the chief financial officer for the county, because I know how critically important that, that partnership is and that expertise. So thank you, Rick. And I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to thank my incredibly supportive spouse who joined me in agreeing that I could stay on a little bit longer here. I'm looking forward to joining him in retirement.
I, I see mountain bike rides in your future. Well, I'm a little bit psychic that way. So I know you have probably a few things on your list, but and, and Rick, you will, in, in the month of September, I think you will learn some more about Benton County government. All right. Anything else?
I see Damian Sands did a little hand clap in the chat.
Let the record note. All right. Is there any other business we need to do at this time?
Since the sheriff's here, maybe ask him if there's anything he wants to share.
You need an adjournment. Thank you.